I'll call this meeting to order. And the first item of business is Maurice Witsky. Is that pronounced right?
That's pretty close, yes.
I like Witsky. Daniel will introduce Maurice. He's a temporary operator at Public Works.
Correct. Maurice is joining us from Hope right now. He's a retired operations manager. And he's helping us out temporarily for to fill in as the interim ops manager at Public Works for the next couple of months until the new CAO concludes the hiring process.
Excellent.
Thank you, Maurice, for helping us. Thank you.
Okay. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for that? Counselor Corlick, seconded Counselor Studley, and all in favor. We have minutes from the special go-in camera minutes on the 27th. Motion for that. So Counselor Krug, Counselor Studley, get in there. All those in favor. And the regular minutes of January 27th, regular minutes. Can I have a motion for that? Counselor Zielinski, Counselor Mazlin, and any corrections, errors, or business arising? None? All those in favor? Carry. Down to council reports, and we'll start with the written report from Counselor Mazlin. Counselor Mazlin, please.
Yes, your worship. See if I can get myself. Okay, here we go. Yes, your worship, the bulk of my report tonight is about what is called a point in time count. This week, a subcommittee of the Social Services Advisory Committee had to begin to plan the details of this enumeration of the homeless in our area. The report that that subcommittee is going to go to the committee, the larger committee, on Wednesday. And the details will be presented first to that committee for approval. Okay? The subcommittee's moving through to the committee. The count does belong to the larger committee, okay? It is the Social Services Advisory Group's count. Okay? Now, this count is based on a federal initiative called the Homelessness Partnering Strategy. Okay? And it's a standardized counting methodology that's been in place in the country since 2016. Now, the subcommittee chose this methodology and these core questions because they are standardized. That is, the questions have been given to hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And it's an opportunity, not just for us to enumerate our homeless, but also add to the understanding of that social phenomenon federally. That is, we will be inputting our data, not just back to our public, but back to the larger public, that is, the country as well. Okay? Basically, I could go into some detail with this, but really, I'd rather the larger committee got a chance to discuss the subcommittee's report first. Okay? Let it be known that I am the coordinator of the count. Okay? The subcommittee selected me. Other members of the subcommittee are working hard to bring together volunteers who do the count. Who are also some other members are working on the data analysis and the actual survey forms. Others are raising money for honoraria and gift certificates that are handed out as part of the count. If you want more details about how to do the count, or the core questions, okay, please take a look at this. I do have an extra couple of copies. You could just probably Google "everyone counts," and you'll find the document. And if you wish to help, you can certainly contact me, too. I guess what I'm asking the municipality for is not, I'm not so much, we need financial support, although it's always nice, but what we really are looking for are administrative and logistical support. Okay? This may mean photocopying the survey forms. Okay? It might mean providing maps, providing contacts, such as a contact with the bylaw officer or the security officer in order to identify locations and challenges and participate in the count. Okay? And probably emergency responders as well. Okay? So that's what, you know, I'll be looking for. I'm going to come back to council again, because I've got, you know, we're in this timeframe, right? Yeah, the subcommittee, I wrote this report, then the subcommittee met. Now we meet, now the subcommittee's going to meet with the whole committee on Wednesday, so it's hard to get all of ducks in a row, but we're working at it. And so I should probably be back to council with my detailed report about the pit count next time. I do, you will hear me talk about it, because I do want to also heighten awareness in the community that this procedure is going to take place. The exact date and time won't be announced publicly till after the account, the count, but we are aiming for the third or fourth week of March. Okay? Feel free, if you've got some questions on that, I'll try to answer.
Just on the timeframe, the 24th is when you could come back to us with some response from the committee, from the large committee?
Yes.
And then it's, from then, it's only four weeks, or three weeks, till the count?
Yes.
The 24th is almost the end, so pretty tight timeline.
Well, yeah, we've got a month yet, right? We have February, the 24th of February.
Is the next regular council meeting.
Yes. And then the count would be in the third or fourth week of March.
Yeah.
Okay, another month heads from then. So there is time to put the ducks in a row and to make it count. It isn't a minute, and that is 24-hour period. Okay? It takes place in a day, probably a smaller portion than 24 hours, as it's just a point in time. You have to understand that it might not be perfectly accurate. Some people might be missed. And that's what, what it does do is it gives us a minimum number of the unsheltered homeless in our area at that point of time. I'm hoping that the Social Services Advisory Group will also do another thing, another following survey called a registry, where there's a seeking out of the hidden homeless, where you go, try to find, you know, these people who are not necessarily unsheltered or in a shelter or in the women's transition house, but couch surfing, all right, are living in a condition where they might temporarily, they don't have security, they're coming out, that sort of thing.
So the scope seems to be quite broad in your point in time count, but you're saying that that could be followed up with something more in-depth in terms of those at risk?
Well, actually, the point in time count, hopefully, is going to be quite narrow. But I have to, I have to run it by this larger Social Services Advisory Group. They're going to be the ones who decide the final scope. But basically, there are three types of, in this point in time, core population is your unsheltered homeless, okay, and your sheltered homeless, right? Those who may be in a motel program, that is-
Temporary housing.
Temporary housing of some sort, in a motel, are institutional life, in jail, for example. So, you know, those are, those would be the core populations for the pit count. The broader scope, you know, of the hidden homeless in our community would have to be conducted over a longer period of time and involve other NPOs.
So would you include people temporarily in other people's homes, like the couch surfers at that level?
No, we, I don't, well-
You're not sure?
Let me see, I can't speak for the committee, right?
Right.
The committee will make the decision, but I hope I'm painting the picture that what the subcommittee is recommending is that we really focus on a highly documented procedure, you know, really standardized, who to ask, what to ask them, when, you know. And we do that, and do it as best as we can, do it well. We port that out, and then decide what else to go on to.
This is just within the city, isn't it?
It will be within, it will be within Grand Forks and area. Okay? That's the subcommittee's, the larger committee will decide elsewhere, but the subcommittee is going to say, is going to recommend the city and area to you.
Counselor Krug.
That was going to be my question, because looking at the questions, it's, is it going to spread boundary-wide? Like, are we talking creed and mail?
This count won't.
Okay.
This count won't, unless, of course, the larger committee on Wednesday says they want to do it larger, okay? It'll be up to them. That's, remember, I'm just reporting the subcommittee here. Other municipalities and other regional districts, you know, if we do do this and we manage to show that we can do it ourselves, you know, we'll encourage them perhaps to do the same thing. Okay? You know, we, we are aware that homelessness is not just a Grand Forks problem. It does extend without, outside the city's limits and probably in other communities, too, depending on the community and how they handle it. Anyhow, so-
Counselor Krug and then Zielinski.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Mazlin. I like the concept of using something tried and true, something standardized, but there has to be the option to add what's necessary for our area, because Grand Forks is part of Canada, but it's not the same as every other city in Canada. Every community has something unique. So as long as this doesn't preclude the committee from saying, you know what? That's not the best question that would fit us. What if we asked this instead? So that ability to not be so rigid that you're stuck on that.
I will, you know, I'm going to let the committee, the larger committee, look at those questions.
Yeah.
Counselor Krug, my advice would be to stay with structured and standardized questions. And not wiggle too much on them, you know, because you, once you start, if you add a question-
Yeah, invalidate the comparison.
You might not, you might get some data, but you, what does it mean and how does it compare?
It does, sorry.
I'm hoping, too, Counselor, that, you know, maybe once every two years or something, if this works, this would be an ongoing thing, something we try every year, every two years and three years, whatever the larger agency deems appropriate.
Okay, so here's an example. You have 12, 20 questions, whatever. And then one of the questions was, were you impacted by the flooding in this community? That's not on anybody else's, and yet would be valuable information for us. So I'm not saying change their questions, just saying, hey, if we want a question 12, then why not put that in? That's information for us.
Okay.
And the rest of Canada doesn't care, because, well, some of it does, because they flooded, but, you know what I mean?
You know, I think, I think your suggestion is good. I'll take it to this larger committee, and they'll have to decide.
Yeah, I'll put it in writing.
It's a different landscape.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyhow, that's that part of my report. Just a brief note that Discover Grand Forks is meeting tomorrow night. Hope to be able to put definite, quote, quotations for new signage, for trailhead signs, and for new trail templates in front of that committee tomorrow, as well as they continue to promote the community following Roger Brooks' plan.
Counselor Mazlin, one other question. Your report says doing the pit count late in March. Any reason why March, or is that just a-
Well, we're basically, well, late in March, because we want to have the time to put it together, so we're going to do it tomorrow. And also, we will, basically, we're trying to do it before the shelter closes. Okay? Because those are part of those, that would be a population that we would need to, we would need to enumerate. So if we do it April 2nd, that population isn't there anymore, and they're going to be harder to find. So that's, that's basically the underlying reason.
Yeah. And I guess, just one question is, if it was in June, would you see more of the couch surfers actually on the streets or not?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Let me find out. Let us find out. You know, that's what I'm trying to do, is have a methodology that will allow us to answer that kind of question.
Did you-
Counselor Krug.
Did you peruse the questions?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I do have one question, maybe you could answer through the mayor. It's the question 12, what gender do you identify with? And it lists man, woman, trans man, trans woman, all of them, but here's one I've never seen before, Two-Spirit.
Yeah. One of the saddest things about counting of homeless in Canada is I believe it's something like 35% of the population of homeless are indigenous peoples, which is way out of whack with their over, I think generally, their 5% in the population.
18% primarily.
And that, that question refers more to, that quality is a base, I believe, the indigenous description of being bisexual. I mean, I might be educated on that.
Yes.
Is it?
Two-spirited.
You will find questions about people, do they identify as indigenous as well, you know, so they would be-
I just never saw it before, so.
You know, like the number I quoted you is a nationwide number. That's what happens when you start looking at numbers nationwide. Some of them don't look very familiar.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Krug, and counsel report?
Not at this time.
Counselor Corlick.
Thank you. It's good to be back in my kneel chair.
Good to have you back.
Chris, can you turn off your light?
To the church.
Yeah, no, we changed the lights.
You hijacked my tape.
For ease of- Oh!
Wow!
Killed the tape.
I broke it.
Hopefully, that's on film.
It's gotten closer.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my gosh, does that mean you're going to break the elevator again?
Yeah, I am. You're going to be here forever.
Counselor Corlick.
Sorry, even though I haven't had a presence here, I have been busy with different things. And one of them is the museum, Foundry Museum Society. They have hired a consultant to help with strategic planning in the museum sector. So I think that I'm going to be participating in that as soon as I can get down the stairs to their meeting, because that's a bit of a challenge. But they are going to do four series, a series of four days, and their committee will be composed of a selection of the museum board members and other leaders in our community. So different people will be involved in the strategic planning. So that should be done, it's going to be quite, it's going to be very, very busy and very in-depth for the four days it's going to go on. But I think it's great, because it's going to help shape the museum's future. Things are going to move forward, and they will have a direction to go in. So I think that's an awesome, so that starts February 29th. So we'll see how that goes. And it's good, they're keeping me in the loop of all the information that's going around, which is good. And also, the chamber has done, they just had their meeting last week, but I couldn't get to that either because it was upstairs. So that was not, but they have a very busy plan and a program going forward. Let's find where I said. Yet I think that we're going to see a lot of good things coming out of that. And I'm very pleased and pretty proud of what they're doing, because I think it's, I think it's great. The thoughts that they're definitely working on the community and, not only the community, but extending it to the boundary, which is part of their mandate as well. So I think it's, I think it's great. I'm sorry, I can't find what I'm looking for, but it was a really good meeting they had. They have a huge, a very broad spectrum of things they're going to be covering, and that they are looking at all sorts of interesting projects. And it's good to, it's good to see them. They've struggled a lot, and there's just no doubt about it. So Discover Grand Forks, as Counselor Mazlin was saying, they're getting right into it, and they're considering all sorts of things, a trade show and, and just all sorts of good things. And I think we have a good future with them. So they are putting together their proposal and for hiring a person to work for different areas of the chamber. So I think, I think there's lots of good things happening. And the fact that they are working together with the DBA for as long as that works, I think it's great to see that they do have a working relationship with so many people that have expanded and grown. So I wish them well. I think that's all I can say for that right now. But it's kind of, it's just good to see them looking for positive and enthusiastic, oh, look on things. But I think that's good for us, for all the good things that are happening in our community. And as I say, it's just good to be participating here than with them. That is hard. So anyway, that's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zielinski.
Kathy.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, two issues. First of all, to let the public know, we've been busy in budget discussions, and I want to thank staff for all their input in educating us. And also, I want to thank council for having patience with all my questions. I do appreciate it. It's going to be a struggle to keep the services going that we have and try and deal with some of the infrastructure issues that we have. So we're definitely down to the hard numbers, but we're working our way there, but it's looking like it's going to be a difficult decision when we get there. The second thing I want to talk about is more of a request to staff. We're coming into that beautiful spring fresh season. In the, in the past, we've been talking about flood response plan. And I guess in my mind, when I hear those terms, I would expect that, and I'll use the Black Train Bridge for an example, when the water gets to this level of the Black Train Bridge, we'll be dumping off sand at these locations, these locations. When it gets to this mark on the Black Train Bridge, we'll be evacuating people and things like that. So I guess my request is that in the next few weeks, or at least in the next second council meeting, if we could have a report from our emergency management group, they're just going to deal with that plan, so we can inform the public and let them know what our plans are and anything that they have to do to get prepared for the spring. Thank you.
There is a lot of growing anxiety hearing the reports of snowpacks, if I agree. Counselor Thompson.
I just have one thing to add, basically, to Counselor Mazlin's report on the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group. Gary Smith, on behalf of the Phoenix Foundation, attended our last meeting and requested that the foundation be given to seat at the table, and that was approved. So that's all I can add today.
Trying to include everybody. Counselors Studley.
Yes, we've definitely been busy with budget. We're almost ready to announce a new CAO. I think that's going to be coming up in the next couple of days. And I just want to remind people that there's going to be some great stuff happening downtown on Family Day, so please participate in that.
Thank you, council. Motion to-
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve counsel report, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor. Regional district, a couple of things. There'll be a major tourism briefing tomorrow at the BCDC. Quite a lengthy discussion about increasing funding for the Film Commission, basically trying to get more action for the boundary. I see action in different communities around us, but again, there's a push here to get the Film Commission more active in our area, and they are short of money, they're strapped. We give a small amount from the regional district, but they're looking at increasing that back up to what it was before. I think, I can't remember exactly what it was. I think it was $10,000. We moved it to five, and they're looking at moving it back up another five. BC Transit was another big discussion. You all know about that. We're looking at public hearings as the next step in that. I made a point of making sure that in their plans for the revisions to the emergency response, that they understood our motion that's coming forward to AKBLG about extreme weather, and that they take that into consideration in their discussions with emergency planning. The other thing is, they did approve the, at that large table, the Poverty Reduction Plan. So that has been approved throughout all the levels of the provincial or the regional district at the table. So that'll be going forward. The other item of business is that council has a desire to change regional district representation. And so what we need for that is we need a motion to appoint to the lead position and a second motion to appoint to a secondary position for an alternate. So I would entertain recommendations for appointment of the regional district as the appointed representative. Counselor Zielinski.
Comment?
Yeah.
Well, you can get it on.
No.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify that, we have you as the lead position right now as regional district head, and Kathy is the alternate?
That's correct.
And I believe the suggestion was just swapping the two of you to put more load on Kathy, is that?
Well, and that would have to be in two separate motions. So if we could start with the first motion to appoint representative.
Okay.
And the second for that, Counselor Krug. All those in favor? And second to appoint me as the alternate. Motion, Counselor Thompson. Second, Counselor Zielinski. All those in favor? Okay. We'll have to report those to the regional district, and so you will be at the table tomorrow. And let me say, I think Kathy's going to do an excellent job. She's got the interest, she's got the time, and I think she's going to bring to the table some new enthusiasm at the regional table. So I'll work with Kathy, support her all I can.
Thank you.
And did I get a motion to accept the regional district report? No. Counselor Zielinski, Counselor Krug, all those in favor? Moving down the page. Temporary use application for craft brewery.
I would get the motion to put it-
This would be to move it to a-
That council.
Oh, my hand, right.
Yeah, the council directs staff to proceed with the statutory requirements for public notice respecting a temporary use permit application for a micro craft brewery at 7454 19th Street.
That is the motion, and seconded by Counselor Mazlin. Discussion on this? Counselor Zielinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things is, well, again, we get down to definitions, right? So we don't have brew hub in our, in our bylaws. So I'd like some explanation on how we're going to finesse around that. And then also, if you want to speak to temporary use permit of three years, I always had, in my mind, temporary use was a year and less. So if I could get some comments on that, please.
So Maurice, can you further raise, is that statute act that you can renew it, but it's for three-year period?
Yeah, it's typical, three years is the, in the legislation, and then for renewal of up to three years. And the definition, it is a liquor license facility, as recognized by the LCRB, and we do have liquor license facility in that zone, so- So being that we've got so much interest in microbrews right now, I think it's time for us perhaps to define them more readily, but they do fit under liquor license facility.
Great, thank you. So the motion's on the table? All those in favor? Sorry.
No, quick question. Thank you. In, in the timeline, you have that last thing as a, what did I say it was? A development variance permit on your table three. Can you tell me what that development variance permit is about, thanks?
Currently, what we have in our zoning bylaw is the parking. And we have been addressing that as new builds. With existing structures which are zero lot line, meaning that the buildings go right from lot line to lot line, which is pretty much every building in the downtown core, we don't enforce, I mean, and it's not clear in our zoning bylaw either, that we do it for, we do it for new builds. So we don't, and the, the practice in the past has not been to charge. It says that we may charge $1,000 for parking spaces. But what we run into there is, we may have a situation where we have, say, a restaurant that requires a certain number of parking spaces and the next year, it's a bookkeeper who requires virtually none. And every time it changes uses of business, we would be considering charging them $1,000 for parking spaces and we have to do that for everybody downtown. And any situation where we have zero lot line buildings, we have 100-year-old buildings where, you know, it used to be horse and buggy and we didn't need, have this requirement for cars. So as a matter of practice, we don't, we haven't been applying that and we've only been applying it for new construction to the standards.
Ron.
Thank you, Your Worship. And that's entirely consistent with most downtown areas where you don't want to punish turnover and people coming into your downtown. You have adequate parking. The $1,000, I think, would actually be a bigger problem because the parking spot today, you know, if you built a parkade in Columbia, they're $40,000 per stall. So you may be actually under, it's better just to forget about it than to have some kind of contingent liability because you haven't charged enough for them. So I think the practice is, my notes suggest that as you move through the zoning bylaw review, is, however you decide you need to change things in your downtown, that would be an area you just want to clarify. But certainly, the practice of not digging an existing building for a change of use is pretty common and there's no shortage of parking, from my view, in the downtown.
Thank you. And so clarifying, this, this starts a public notice process, going for the vote, calling the question, all those in favor? Posed, carried. And active transportation wayfaring grant. So this is an $80,000 grant with the potential of us being responsible for 50% of it. And it's, it's to go ahead with an application for wayfaring. Graham, did you have some comments on this to make to set it up?
Thank you, Your Worship. Absolutely. So this is an opportunity that staff became aware of. It's kind of a evolution of bike DC grants and, and other resources that are available from the province. It's a multi-stage kind of process where they fund planning work and then at some point also fund infrastructure work. You know, so presuming that the grants are available in the future, this would ladder into those. The city had identified active transportation as one of the priorities of the official community plan update that's being scheduled for this year. And a portion of the fund was, you know, tentatively allocated for, for that work coming from the city's budget. And we'd also applied for a wayfaring strategic plan last year, which a lot of the theme was about active transportation and included many consultation elements that were in there. So the department discussed this opportunity, identified that a portion of the funding that would be directed from the OCP. There'd still be products from that, but that would flow back to the OCP, but would enable some leveraging of this to get some additional funding in. That would pay for essentially the wayfaring signage as well as the active transportation plan at the same time.
Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were these numbers included in budget stuff we've dealt with?
This is subject to funding, but do you, are we budgeting for it?
Yeah, so what we had thought was that the active transportation, so what would have been included in the official community plan, the active transportation piece would have been a more higher level look at active transportation, where this grant will give us that really deep dive in-depth look, plus the wayfaring signage that we didn't get the funding for last year. We feel that we can probably, that the, that portion of the OCP probably would have cost about $25,000 of the overall $150,000 for the official community plan. So we felt we could reallocate probably $25,000 from the official community plan and then the remainder would be coming from my consulting budget. So it would tighten up. But I mean, I think most of my consulting budget was gonna be spent on, probably it was skin zoning anyways. So this would be, it would be in line with what I planned on basically for my consulting budget and my planning and potential engineering budget as well.
So we're ready to go if we do get approval of the grant? Thank you. And are we ready for this motion? Counselor Maslin.
Yes, Your Worship. I, I'm quite torn by this because really, I'd rather just build something. Okay? You know, I, I know, we, well, no, in the future, we have some critical needs in our existing bike infrastructure plan that comes up to us from our previous official community plan. You know, that have been identified as worthy of work. There's two phases to this active transportation, right? There's this, as Mr. Wad has pointed out, there's the first phase where you apply for planning, a planning grant, that's basically what this is. And there's the other one where you plan, you, you know, apply for actual infrastructure. Well, okay, I, I'm trying hard to be patient because, you know, I, I see that this active transportation is a real key to us. We're trying to be a bike-friendly community and we're trying to build bike-friendly mitigation works. And yeah, a plan might really shed some light on that, but we're gonna then have to go apply for the second phase. So basically, what I don't want to see happen is that we apply for a planning grant and don't get it, so we just sit back. My other worry is, we apply for a planning grant, we plan something and then we'll have the wherewithal to do the second thing, which is actually build something. Anyhow, Your Worship, I, I've been trying to express my concerns about this. I'd rather we just build something. On the other hand, I do understand that it is an integral part of where, of who we are and what we want to become. So, okay, I, you know, I, I can support the grant, the strat, the planning phase of it, if we get it. And, but I, you know, if we don't get it, I'm not, I'm coming back. Well, we didn't get the planning, so let's go for the infrastructure. You know, I don't want to sit back on this. Mark, put it off. It is an integral part of our, our plans, our, our goals for this term. And I'd sure like to see some realization of those goals before the end of term.
And I hope both your scenarios are wrong, that we actually plan and then we do it. Graham, did you want to comment at all before we vote? On the two negatives that we're not gonna let happen?
Thank you, Your Worship. I actually wrote a paper on this question last year as a bit of an escape from flood recovery stuff on how to fund the bike network plan from the 2011 OCP. So we're, we're already thinking ahead.
All right, great, we're on that. This is not gonna happen, Counselor Maslin, we're gonna do it. Ready for the call here? We don't have the, the motion on the floor yet. Counselor Zelinski makes the motion, Counselor Corle secens it. Any further discussion? This is applying for the grant, all those in favor? Carried. And information items were down to bylaws. And the first one is the inter-community business licensing, which we, we did address somewhat today in committee of the whole. Can we have a motion at this point that we give third reading to the inter-community business licensing process? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corle, discussion? All those in favor? Posed, carried. And the water regulations, we have a series of, of motions to make here and so we'll try and coordinate things. We have some removals and two new motions. So we can walk down through them. The council gives first three readings to water regulation bylaw 2065, which is the new regulation. A motion for that. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? And moving down to the repeal, so that we repeal the Water Regulations Number 1973. Motion to repeal. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Zelinski, all those in favor? Moving down to the first three readings for the new bylaw, Water Regulations 2066. Motion to adopt. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corle, all those in favor? And now the last one is to repeal the sewer regulations bylaw 1974, repeal. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corle, all those in favor? Did we do them all right, Kevin?
Sounds good to me, sir.
Okay. All right. And electrical regulations is the next item of business and we're looking again here at two resolutions, one to initiate the new electrical regulations and the next to repeal. So the first one is to give the first three readings to bylaw number 2067. And I have motion, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Zelinski, all those in favor? And the repeal bylaw number 2015, motion to adopt, Counselor Corle, second Counselor Zelinski, all those in favor? Anyone want to comment on any of that? Counselor Maslin.
I, yeah, Your Worship, I, I, yeah, I, I was a little apprehensive, you know, that if I started asking questions, we'd be rescinding third reading again on these things. But my real motivation was, is if I vote for it, they won't bring it back.
Yeah, we have had this in front of us a number of times. There's been a lot of it from council on matters.
Yeah, these, those bylaws aren't easy to read, are they?
Not at all. And I appreciate that we have readers in our group. Okay, we have no late items and I open for questions from the public and media. Mr. Johnson.
Congratulations. I know that the RDKB office here is on the same floor as the ground, so that's good. Hopefully, you don't have to travel somewhere where it isn't that way. But I would point out, and I don't know if it works, the museum does actually have a chairlift on the downstairs.
It's broken.
It's broken.
It's broken.
They should fix it. Complain to Laura, she'll.
You'll get it going. Further from the gallery or the media?
Similar vein to last here. I was wondering, given your recent experience, what you've noticed about accessibility issues in Grand Forks?
I have noticed a lot of things about inaccessibility in Grand Forks. And it's like going on the corners and you want to cross the road, you have to go down into like a gutter and then try and get up. I have a little knee scooter and doesn't have chains or steel tires. It's really challenging and even, I'd say even a walnut will do that or an elastic band because they're, they're just little wheels. But I find that trying to cross the road is an issue sometimes. Once you get on the pavement, it's fine, but it's to get that far. And because it's, many of our people don't even stop for you at crosswalks, if you are in any kind of, something to help you get across there, some sort of thing, by the time you get onto the road, you could be run over because a lot of people don't care. I've noticed that in my little travels. I also noticed that some of the downtown businesses, some do clean their sidewalks, some don't. So if I was coming down Third, I could get to the dentist and maybe to the financial place, then I'm stuck because it's ice and snow, because there's nobody taking care of that. I mean, in the residence by my house, I clean my own and the city is very good at doing most of the sidewalks, but it's just in front of some of the businesses and trying to cross the roads. It's just, it's, it's just the way it's, it's is, you know? It's not very accessible.
Is there any feedback for operations based on your experience?
There will be.
Yeah, I'm trying and things out. And honestly, what I've also noticed is bricks. Bricks are not good for things because they have all these little ridges you can get caught in. So that's a bit of a challenge there as well. But all in all.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a comment. I noticed that I see quite a few people in medichairs and little medical scooters on the road because the sidewalks are a pain and that little div at the bottom there where it hits the pavement can be really hard to pass through, right?
For sure.
And that's putting people's lives in jeopardy.
We can do this.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was what David had in the capital plan. I think it was only $50,000, but that was for those letdowns.
Was that what they cost?
Yeah. And so that was in the capital plan for the operations. I thought capital was all, but I remember it was in there. And I remember there was a question about what, you know, what's the point of it or why do we have it, but that is why, is those letdowns. And so we've been working at maybe only a couple or three or four a year, but whatever the guys have capacity for and working on those letdowns, yeah.
That's good to know.
Excellent. All right, anything further? Hearing done, motion to adjourn. Counselor Thompson.